City Council of the City of Lake City, Texas will now come to order in the regular meeting on January 10th at 6:00 p.m. First order of business is roll call. Mayor Hallissey is here. Mr. Becker?
President.
Mr. Doogie?
Here.
Mr. Milliken?
Here.
Mr. Kinzie?
Here.
Mr. Capone?
Here.
Mr. Gross?
President.
And Mr. Long. This time, I'd like to introduce Rabbi Yitzhak Schmuckler of Chabad of the Bay Area, who will be our invitation speaker this evening. Rabbi, thank you for being here.
Almighty God, we stand before you in prayer. With the year already concluded and a new year just beginning, I'm reminded of the ancient prayer that we recite in the synagogue upon the annual completion of each of the five books of Moses, and just as we prepare to start studying a new one. Be strong, be strong, and let us be strengthened. Almighty God, grant us the insight to take counsel from the lessons of the year concluded and to be strengthened by them. And as we begin this new year with optimism and confidence, grant us the vision and wisdom to succeed in embracing its opportunities and navigating its challenges in a spirit of mutual respect and with an eye for finding the common ground in our search for the common good. We ask you, dear God, to bless the honorable mayor, esteemed members of this council and their staff, city manager, and everybody present here today with good health and success in all their endeavors for the benefit of our beautiful city of Lake City. And may this year of 2017 be one of growth, strength, prosperity, and happiness for all of our citizens. Be strong, be strong, and let us be strengthened, and together let us say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, if I could remind everybody, as I will do, to turn your phones to silent. Thank you. Still joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the Texas pledge?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the League of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Good evening, Denver, morning. I want to welcome you to our first council meeting of 2017. It's going to be a great year for the City of Lake City. Right, everybody over here? Excellent, thank you. Item three on the agenda is approval of minutes. Three A is October 24th, 2016. Three B is November 8th, 2016, regular meeting. Item three C is November 21st, 2016, council work session. And item three D, November 22nd, special meeting. If there are any, if there are no corrections to the minutes, then these minutes shall stand approved. All right. Consider to take action on appointments, presentations, boards and commissions. All right. Mr. Kinzie. I was advised that each one of these boards, different than the ones we did last week, all have to be voted on individually. So the first item is the Hotel Occupancy Tax Advisory Board.
Sir's for it.
Works for it.
You're right.
Okay. And I'm recommending Monica Hughes as a reappointment to that board. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Long, seconded by?
I can pick hand for myself.
Okay. Mr. Kinzie. All right. For any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes eight, zero, four. Okay. Item, or council position four, or position two appointee, Finance Committee, Audrey Ayers, reappointment. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Long, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kinzie? Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes eight, four, zero against. Okay. Council position appointee to the Finance Committee, that's what I'm doing. I'm the first one was Paul Miss, new appointment. Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Milliken, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Mr. Milliken, have you voted?
Very good.
Motion passes eight to zero. All right. Finance Committee, Mayor's appointment. I'm appointing Hank Doogie. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Long?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Capone? Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. All right. Council position five on the Finance Committee, Mark Elliott. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes seven, four. Mr. Becker, one against. Okay. Council position six appointee, Tom Cruz. Is there a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Long? Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, I guess that's position one, William Arnold is a reappointment. Motion to approve. Mr. Milliken, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Doogie. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Planning Commission, I'll say position three, new appointment, Annette Ramirez. Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Doogie, any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Okay. Motion passes six, four, with Mr. Kinzie and Mr. Becker, none. Position seven on planning and zoning, Gene Benhammer, to reappointment. Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Mr. Milliken, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Kinzie? Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes eight, four, no against. Okay. Position eight, Mike Lee, new appointment. Is there a motion?
To approve.
Mr. Kinzie?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Long? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Seven, four, Mr. Becker, against, one against. Okay. Four B, Industrial Development Corporation, these are two-year terms. Position two, Howard Jones. Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Kinzie? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Section four B, Industrial Development Corporation, position four, Andrew Peters. Is there a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Four B Industrial Development Corporation, position six, Laddie Howard, who is a reappointment. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Mr. Long?
Second.
Mr. Kinzie? Okay. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. And two, motion passes eight, four, zero against. Zoning Board of Adjustment, position one, recommended Kathleen Benoit, reappointment. Is there a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Miller. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Eight votes for, zero against. Zoning Board of Adjustment, positions three, Michael Hendershot, he's a reappointment. Is there a motion?
To approve.
Mr. Doogie? Second. Seconded by Mr. Miller. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Motion passes eight, four, zero against. Zoning Board of Adjustment, position five, Paul Lopez, a reappointment. Is there a motion?
Second.
Kinzie and Mr. Long? Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Eight votes for, zero against. Zoning Board of Adjustment, alternate number one, Brian Brown, who would be a new appointment. Is there a motion? Motion.
Second.
Mr. Milliken, would you step in a bit?
Or Mr. Capone, let's vote.
All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Six votes for, Mr. Kinzie and Mr. Becker are noses. Motion passes. Okay. Zoning Board of Adjustment, alternate number two, Robert Klein, is a new appointment. Is there a motion?
To approve.
All right. Mr. Doogie, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Long? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes eight, four, zero against. Thank you very much. That takes care of all of our board appointments for tonight. I think we may have a few additional ones next week, but we're getting a good response on these boards and commissions for change, and I'm happy to hear all that. Item four B is consider and take action on appointment of a member of the Lake City Volunteer Fire Department's Pension Board. Is there a motion?
I'm going to report, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kinzie. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Doogie? Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That's eight votes for, no against. Okay. All right. That will be the spotlight, but we will have the chamber here next, in two weeks, right? Yes. Public hearings are action items from public hearings. Item seven is citizens' requests for hearing before city council. The privilege of speaking at this time is limited to the following persons: residents, persons having an ownership interest in property or a business located with the city, within the city, or their attorneys. A statement of no more than three minutes might be made, may be made. There will be no yielding of time to another person. State law prohibits the mayor and members of city council from commenting on any statement or engaging in dialogue without an appropriate agenda item being posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Comments should be directed to the entire council, not individual members of council or staff. If addressing a specific agenda item, speakers must keep their remarks specific to the item being considered by the city council. And any speaker making personal attacks or using vulgar or profane language shall forfeit his or her remaining time and shall be seated. All right. Here we go. First speaker is Mr. Bill Hines.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you again for the privilege of speaking. Excuse me, I'm sorry. My name is Bill Hines. I live at 1505 Lanier, Lake City, Texas, 77573. I have two quick things to speak on tonight, very short. The first is, again, at the last city council meeting, as reported by the press and by social media, there were incidents involving violation of the Texas Meetings Act and advice from council that this was acceptable. I strongly urge city council to consider getting council that does not place them at Guys, and I mean that figuratively, it's y'all's tail. Quit placing yourself at risk. Get a council that will steer you straight and not get you in trouble. Closing subject one. Closing subject two. I have come across an interesting book, and I would urge the city to recommend to the appropriate people that we included in the city library. It is called Silver Lining in a Funnel Cloud: Green Corruption in the Joplin Tornado. It is a fascinating read. I'm almost finished with it. I just have some fun stuff marked. We don't need to discuss it, but it's a good book, and it would be a good advisory, a prep, if you will, to how to look at selecting people for hired city positions. It's a good read. I strongly recommend it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. And next on the agenda is our illustrious leader of the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, you're not going to give your three minutes?
Well, I take you back. Our illustrious leader of the Chamber of Commerce has ducked out. Not a problem. Thanks for the time savers. Comments, reports from members of the city council, announcements concerning items of community interest, no action will be taken or discussed. We'll start with Mr. Gross.
Good evening, everybody, and I want to welcome you to the first city council meeting of the year 2017. And I know that we have all made our New Year's resolutions to make this city great and our country great, and lose weight, and things like that. My commitment, my New Year's resolution for this year as a public servant is to renew my commitment to serve the people in Lake City as best I can. And for the most part, what that means is listening to what the people have to say, to return their calls, and hear the criticisms that they have, and take it to heart, and reevaluate our stance or my stance on relative positions. I believe it's our critics that keep our feet on the ground and keep us grounded with good sense and reason, and we're always having to reevaluate our position. And in this year, several critics have criticized us on council in signing a letter several months back. And we have gone round and round and have debated this letter over the months, whether it was a violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act and such and so forth. And I've gone round and round, and I've written briefs, but the only part that I really couldn't reconcile is whether it was the exercise of good judgment for me to participate and sign the letter that would have been sent to the mayor in the mail, and then sit right next to him and never say a word to him. I know the mayor better than that. I knew the mayor better than that then, and I know the mayor better than that now. In reflection, after I learned of these allegations, I think the proper thing to me to do was just to give the mayor a call, or just reach over and talk to him, because I had his phone number, and I know where he is. I really regret participating in signing that letter, because I think as a friend, as a colleague, as a private matter, it could have been handled with a phone call or just a quick conversation. And I think to send the letter was cold and callous under those circumstances. And I only bring this about is because council has butted heads from time to time, and I think it's important that we on council can work together. And as part of my commitment for Lake City is if I do something wrong or I screw up, I'll come forward and I'll admit it, and I've asked the mayor, you know, to accept my apologies. And so, in my promise to keep my New Year's resolution, I do apologize to Mr. Mayor, and I hope he'll accept my apology or something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Mr. Long?
Yeah, so we got, I got a bunch of emails and a couple of phone calls about item 13A, and I had half expected a couple of people in the audience who had last year came and talked about that item. This was government's policy. I thought they were going to get up and kind of talk about that tonight. This is an item, I know that last time when we changed the government's policy, we delayed it multiple times to get citizens' input and get their say on this whole thing. So, you know, for those of you that weren't at the workshop last night, I think we all agreed to delay this item to give the citizens more chance to give us input, to say what they like, what they don't like, whatever it may be, and to address this kind of thoroughly in a workshop as a topic of discussion, so maybe then we can get ahead of it and really get some feedback. So I'm glad that we all came into that agreement last night, and we'll see what happens with this 13A, but thanks and a happy year.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Mr. Doogie, uh, Mr. Becker?
I yield my time.
Okay. Mr. Doogie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Leapfrogging on what Mr. Gross said and our earlier appointments to different boards and commissions, I really only have one thought, and that thought is that 2017 is going to be the best year that Lake City has ever had. And I'm excited for the year to work with each of you. I know we're going to have our disagreements, but in this line of work, if we're not disagreeing, we're not doing our job. So I think we're going to have our disagreements, but we're going to work through them, and we're going to be civil and respectful, and I think it's going to benefit the city as a whole. So I look forward to the year ahead, and I hope that everyone had a wonderful holiday season with their family. I know that I did. I think the month of December, this time of year, really shows a lot of the great things that Lake City has to offer, and a lot of community events, and I really hope it carries through into the new year. So thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Doogie. Mr. Milliken?
Good evening. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Thank you for tuning in out there. I, two of the things that I wanted to do when I started setting up here on the dais and sit out there in the gallery, I decided I wanted to really tour all of the facilities of Lake City, and I wanted to attend all the boards and commissions, because I felt like that was something that would give me insight to how this city operates a little better, and how those boards and commissions operate. And I'm, might I say, right now, currently I've toured the Public Safety Building, and I'm most impressed with that facility. I can tell you that the 9/11 center, the control center, is just outstanding. The whole facility is outstanding. When you consider how large the generator is, it looked more like a locomotive than it does a generator. The training room, the evidence room, and how evidence is handled, I got a supreme tour, and I can tell you that it's most impressive, and I think that this facility will carry us for a long, long, long way in the future. It served the citizens very well. I got a tour of all the fire stations, of all those facilities. Some of them are under construction, some are brand new, but again, I can tell you that I was most impressed with the location of the fire station, how well-equipped they were, just the facilities themselves were in very good shape. We also looked at the equipment, and that was kind of an eye-opener, too, as far as some of the dates and how old some of the equipment is, and where all those equipments are placed, and the reasons why. Again, I had a very, very good tour, and I can tell you that I was most impressed and opened my eyes to some questions that I think that I'm going to be exploring in the future. I also toured the Dickinson Maintenance Facility, and again, it was, it was an eye-opener for me, of all the things and activities that they handle out of that center, from the sign shop. I didn't realize that Lake City had its own sign shop, made all its own street signs, and it's just a fabulous little room back there that those guys just do a great job in saving the city a ton, huh? The traffic center, where we have the ability to control the traffic lights all around the city, and I think that that traffic center is just, it's tremendous, and it's just taking up one little room over there, and what they, what they're able to do, and the traffic cameras in real time is just outstanding. Vehicle maintenance is another facility. It's a regular garage with a tremendous amount of opportunities, of activities going on that take care of all of the maintenance of our vehicles. And I have to say is that I was quite impressed with how the facility was run and the way the facility actually was maintained. Also got first look at the Dallas Salmon Wastewater Treatment Plant, too, and that was an eye-opener. I didn't realize that treating sewage was such an ordeal, but I can certainly tell you that the different activities it has to go through, all the way down to the little bugs and organisms that treat all that stuff, looking, the affluent, when it actually leaves the plant, and how clean it is, it really, it really, you know, an eye-opener for me, and I can tell you that I really enjoyed those tours and looking forward for the tours that I've got planned for this next month. Along with that, on the boards and commissions, I have been able to attend the Planning and Zoning Commission twice. I've attended the Finance Committee once. I attended the Parks Board twice. And I have to say is that most impressed is the Parks Board, is that I can tell you that the work that the Parks Board does is well-organized, they have a lot on their plate, and I'm most impressed with the Parks Board because of just what recently happened with our staff. It's, as a lot of citizens know, we have been challenged in this city for a dog park for a long, long time, and just this last Parks Board meeting, I think that it all came to fruition, that everybody put their heads together. Mr. Baumgartner came up with an excellent location. Mr. Chin worked with city staff and got a lot of engineering done and activities, and it looks like we're actually going to be able to have a dog park at Capone Park this year, and it's going to happen. And it's fantastic. That itself, I can tell you, is that I was most amazed from where they were at my first meeting and where it concluded at the second meeting. It's just, it looked, it's going to happen, and it's just great, the way those folks work together, and hats off to the staff for putting that all together, because in the budget, I don't know if y'all know it or not, but we do have $150,000, which was meant just to start getting the engineering done in the aspect where it looks like we're going to have a dog park for $150,000. And that's just, just a miracle in my opinion, and I wanted to say hats off to those guys. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, Mr. Milken, good job. Mr. Kinsey?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year to everybody. I'll be brief, real quick, over to the library, computer classes have started for 2017. The next class is the basic parts on a computer and that'll be on Wednesday, January 11th at 10:00 a.m. in the computer lab on the second floor. The local author is out, will meet in the theater on Thursday, January 12th at 10:15 a.m. James Valentino will present, who's working on Galveston Bay and Galveston County. And finally, the special club will meet in the theater on Monday, the 23rd at 7:00 p.m. This month's selection, The Great Enchey by Susanna O'Callaghan. Thanks and everybody have a blessed week.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsey. Mr. Crepon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year. Very excited about being your councilman for 2017. I've had some meetings with John and the directors and I'll tell you what, it's been, they've been helpful, positive, productive. Lots of wonderful things going on in our city now and I'm very excited about that. We had a great workshop meeting last night and I just see wonderful things happening in Lead City. It's very positive.
Thank you, Mr. Crepon. Uh, just a couple announcements to make. Dee's got stand-ups, everybody can see her, just for a second. Please, stand up. Dee asked me to announce for her tonight that they will be unloading, the Lead City Rotary Club will be unloading a food truck, a big tractor-trailer setup over at Lead City Elementary School on Thursday at 1:00. She'd like to invite everybody that's in the audience tonight, all of you that are home, to please show up. The food on these trucks is distributed to people within Lead City who may be just a bit less fortunate than the rest of us. So it's a good project of the Rotary Club, which always has shown leadership in this community and it's a good job. So I encourage you, if you have time, Janice goes out there and works the trucks, right? That is at Lead City Elementary. Okay? Several. Everybody raise your hand and works the trucks. Okay? Those 10 people that raised their hands said they needed some help. So if you're available, please, we'd like to have you out there. I want to thank Mr. Gross. Not easy to do what he did, but I appreciate it. He's a good guy and, you know, we all get to know each other up here. But I want to point and take it just a step farther. We've had about two months' worth of meetings. There's not been one cantankerous word said. We have gotten along. Everybody is focused on the future, talking about planning, talking about getting together and doing envisioning projects and that sort of thing. So I think we, we have crossed the, crossed the line in terms of trying to get along. We don't always agree on everything, but we're learning how to deal with that, all of us. It's a, it's a work in progress, so hang in there with us. I also want to tell you that, that last month, we, we made a change and John Baumgartner became our interim city manager. And for anyone in the community that might have been a naysayer that said that we were going to take a step backward by making changes, I want to assure everyone, John Baumgartner is a first-class human being and he is doing a great job as interim city manager, which I expect to continue. He's got the respect of his staff and employees of this city and he works to find solutions, not to find obstacles. So that's, that's a long way. John, we're very proud of you and just keep up the good work. And Mr. Gross said if it gets bad, he'll take the next speech at you. Just joking. Anyway, happy new year to everyone and it's, it is, echo Mr. Doogie's comments, going to be a great year for Lead City. Thank you. All right. Item nine, staff reports, and I know you're going to introduce your new staff member.
Couple of, couple of words, just I guess to follow council member Milliken's. We do have great people that work for Lead City. I call them everyday heroes and they strive to provide world-class customer service. And so if there's an issue out there and we don't know about it, I encourage you to call me, call Gabe Menendez. He loves to hear about things like these are sidewalk trash, streets, street like eyes and stuff. Anyway, nonetheless, I appreciate the kind words from council member Milliken. Appreciate the council, they provide the resources necessary for us to do our job and meet the needs of the community. And with that, we've got a couple of new additions to our staff who've been waiting a little bit while. First is Sashi Kumar. He's our new city engineer. We've been waiting about five months for him. He has served the city of Sugarland for approximately 13 years, part of being selected for this position and a variety of roles, including senior engineer, drainage engineer, capital program manager. Sashi has lived in the Houston area for more than 23 years. He holds a bachelor, bachelor civil engineering degree from Bangalore University in India and a master in civil engineering from Lamar University. And is earning a master of business administration from University of Houston Victoria. He's also a certified flood payment manager and a registered professional engineer. We're delighted to have Sashi. He's been on the job for two days now and he's coming back tomorrow, so welcome, welcome, Sashi. And then secondly, I don't think he's here tonight, but Monday we also hired a new chief building official. His name is Bob Kinsey. He is, Paul Menzies says thank you and so does the staff. They're tired of Paul being a building official too. He served, Bob has served as the building official and flood payment administrator for the city of New Braunfels for nearly 11 years, part of being selected for this position. His responsibilities included serving as a project manager with the construction of the city civic center, their fire station six, a day-to-day management of the building department, reviewing and evaluating development proposals and flood payment prevention. Bob holds certifications as a building official, fire plan, fire plans examiner, plumbing inspector and flood plan manager. We're happy to welcome Bob to the team too. Thank you, Bob. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you, sir.
All right, let's move on to item 10, the consent agenda. Items 10A through 10I. Anybody want to pull any of these? All right, move to approve. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion pass, motion passes eight to zero.
If I may, real quick, Mayor, while you're getting, changing the sheets, the sheet setup. Item 10B on this, which is traffic and nuisance stuff. At South Shore, John and I have been working on this, asking about this every two weeks. But we have been working on this for, well, over three years. And I really want to thank you for this, bringing this fruition in council for asking it, as it's great. Once we get it complete, we'll be able to pay before. Just thank everybody.
We're good.
I appreciate the kind words. I appreciate council member Kinsey mentioning the pain piece, it's probably six, eight months, but we'll have that intersection fully more efficiently and, you know, it's not me, it's the folks who are needing any comment to bring this thing forward. So appreciate it, man.
Okay. All right. There is no items on 11. There are no items under old business. Under new business, 13A has been delayed until the February meeting. That's the discussion of the governance policy, so we'll pass that by. Item 14 is first reading of ordinance 14A, consider and take action on ordinance amending the city of Lead City, Texas governmental proprietary capital funds budget for fiscal... We've delayed that until February. Yeah, 13A is the government's.
There's an old agenda on here. Still have the wrong one up, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, let me start over. Item 14A is consider and take action on ordinance amending the city of Lead City, Texas governmental proprietary capital funds budget for fiscal year 2016 by amending ordinance number 20, 2015-34, 2016-10, 2016-11, and 2016-15 and 2016-33 to adjust the operating budget for actual and expended, projected expenditures. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve first and final.
All right. Mr. Kinsey and Mr. Long, first and final. Motion's, any discussion on the first and final?
Yeah. Just if staff could give kind of a brief, just so everybody understands what's happening. Not the last, but any problem.
From Henry, she's going to take it from, fortunately it's off the line. So that's great. This is our year-end budget amendment for fiscal year 2016. At the end of the year, we're currently closing out, making the final adjustments and closing out 9316. And there's a few items we need to, to basically just clean up. There's a couple of items that are small in some small departments, the city secretary's office and the communications office. Those departments ran slightly over budget. That was not a management issue in those departments. We do budget a vacancy savings in every department and those small departments that don't have turnover have a difficult time creating the savings to cover that. So there's an adjustment in there for that. There's also an adjustment in the facilities maintenance department to fund some additional overtime for some work that was done to do, to manage a in-house construction project for the rework of 500 walkroom. And so they had some overtime expenses that we needed to cover. Also, if you remember during fiscal year 2016, we did two refunding bond issues and one CO issue. Those refunding bond, all those issues, of course, came to council with full disclosure of the costs and the savings that were involved in those issues. We did not have budgeted funds for those bond issuance costs and for some cash contributions that were required to those refundings. So that's what these larger dollar amounts are for in this adjustment. The last item is funding for a revenue bond issue 2008 that was used to finance the Southwest wastewater plant primarily. That project was in part eligible for capital recovery fee funding. We have several million dollars in the wastewater capital recovery fee fund and we feel that it's prudent to utilize some of those funds to make the debt, part of the debt service payments on that bond issue. So that's $390,000 for fiscal 16. And our plan going forward for the next four years is to do the same thing, to finish that bond off.
Just a question on that. So instead of using general funds, we use restricted funds?
Yes, actually, instead of using utility operating revenue. Because that is, thank you for pointing that out, that is in lieu of rate revenue.
Okay, any further questions?
That's all I have on that.
You did what?
Thank you so much, sir.
Good job. All right, this first vote is going to be on first and final. Okay? There's no discussion on that? Please vote. Motion passes eight for, zero against. Now we'll be voting on the original, would you include your original motion in that? First and final, separate? Okay. We'll be voting on the original motion. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes eight for, no against. Okay, item 14B, consider and take action on an ordinance amending city of Lead City, Texas governmental proprietary capital funds budget for fiscal year 2017 by amending ordinance 2016-30 to adjust the operating and capital budget for actual and projected expenditures. Staff's requesting first and final on that. So is there a motion?
I'm going to approve first and final.
Mr. Kinsey, second? Mr. Doogie, second, or is that not? All right. Any discussion on the first and final? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, do we have a motion on the...
We've covered both.
Oh, you've covered both, okay. Then let's vote on the original, on the motion. Okay? No discussion, please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, 14C, consider and take action on ordinance amending chapter two, article eight, section two, dash, three eighty-eight of code of ordinance is the city of Lead City to require each board and commission to provide an opportunity for public comment on its agendas. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
So, Mr. Doogie, all right, any discussion? I don't know if everybody probably understands the reasons for this. Just some continuity. Yeah. Mr. Doogie?
I would like to briefly clarify the intent of this. I think good government is accessible to people and if a citizen comes in and wants to speak in one of the meetings or functions, they should have the ability with reason. So ideally, we have a common section for citizens, very similar to our item number seven of council meetings, citizens request for hearing before city council. And I think that some of the boards and commissions have already implemented something and seen some success. So I'm happy that this has come about and I'm happy that the citizens are supporting. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes eight for, no against. Item 15 is tabled item, subject to recall, there are none. Item 16 is item stabled after electronic agenda completed, there are none. All right, executive session. Section 551-072, Government Code, deliberation about real property, which states, "A governmental body may conduct a closed meeting to deliberate purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person." 551.071 of the Government Code, which states, "A governmental body may not conduct a private consultation with its attorney except when the governmental body seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation and be a settlement offer, or on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct and the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter." Section 551-074, Government Code, personnel matters, which states, "The chapter does not require a governmental body to conduct an open meeting to deliberate the appointment, appointment, employment, or evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer employee, or to hear a complaint or charge against an officer employee." Subsection A does not apply if the officer employee who is subject to the deliberation or hearing requests a public hearing. Do you, John Baumgartner, request a public hearing? I do not. Okay? All right. Mr. Doan, do you request a public hearing? One second. Okay. City council will now go into executive session pursuant to subchapter D of the Open Meetings Act, section 551 and out, Government Code on this 10th day of January 2017 at 6:49 p.m. City council's completed its executive session on the 10th day of January at 8:24 p.m. City council will now convene in open session. There was no final action, decision, or vote with regard to any matter considered in the executive session just concluded. Item 18, 18A, consider and take action on discussion concerning potential purchase or sale of real property interest.
I make a motion to authorize staff to continue this discussion with Pasadena to purchase water as discussed in the executive session.
Okay, Mr. Doogie moved. Is there a second?
Seven.
Mr. Long, second. Okay, any discussion? Other than to say we're working on long-range... Other than to say we're working on a long-range strategy, that by John on water supply?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. No further discussion, please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. 18 is consider and take action regarding potential litigation regarding former city manager Mark Roar. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize staff to pay Mark Roar the severance payment, deferred performance incentives, and accrual pursuant to his contract.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Gross, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. 18C, consider and take action on appointment or appointment of a public officer or employee with interim city manager. As most of you know, at the last meeting, we formally made John Baumgartner the interim city manager, and there is a cost adjustment to that in his salary. The motion that I'm making is to increase his salary from John Baumgartner 10% for this period that he served as Indian interim city manager. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Yes.
And that that 10% is pursuant to our normal policy for interim directors?
Yes.
Pretty standard. Okay. Hearing no further discussion, please vote. Okay, item 18, there is no motion. With that said, at 8:27 p.m., there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.